Okay. Do you have a...
Do you need it or not need it?
Okay.
Okay, we'll open the special meeting of council held January 6th, 2018. Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, indeed it is. February. Who's our IT guy? Because I'm talking... Okay. So, number one, approval of the agenda?
It's moved by Councilor Barker, seconded by Councilor Mino. The council approves the agenda for its special meeting of February 6th, 2018 as presented.
All in favor? Declaration of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Petitions and delegations? Ashley, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. We're here tonight to talk about a zoning bylaw amendment application that was submitted by Catherine Morrison for the south end of George Street. It's located at the intersection of George and Queen on the southwestern corner. The purpose of the application is to rezone approximately 0.63 acres of land on George Street for the purpose of constructing a single detached dwelling on the property. Currently, the lands are zoned rural, which would allow for a single detached dwelling to be permitted, however, it wouldn't allow for them to connect to water and sewer services. So just an aerial representation of where we're looking, it's just on your way to the path to Kinross Pond off of Queen Street. Here's some photos that we did take of the area. You can actually see the survey pin, there's a red flag there showing where the property would start. And just showing that the property is heavily vegetated and cleared in that area for winter maintenance. So in terms of planning considerations for the amendment to take place, there's definitely support within the provincial policy statement. It is an area that is already heavily developed from a residential standpoint, so extending it for that little piece obviously would not have any... There's no issues there from a planning perspective. It is going to be serviced via Water and Sewer Services, that's going to be at the expense of the purchaser of the property. It's designated residential within our official plan. This property is actually something that we would have taken care of as part of our zoning bylaw update, but we haven't quite got there yet. So our official plan actually has the property designated residential, so not rural, and zoned rural, which should be... We would have gone ahead and done the R1 residential low-density zoning anyways as part of our update. So it's just beating us to the punch at this point. In terms of the summary, they're, again, going from rural to residential low-density, constructing a single detached dwelling on the piece of land that will be fully serviced by municipal water and sewer. The site visit did reveal the property is heavily vegetated, and that they will need to remove trees and fill some of the property in order to make it adequate for construction. The service extension is supposed to take place this spring, and that will be fully burdened by the applicant. It's also confirmed that the property has insufficient lot frontage on the north end of the property, fronting on Queen Street. So just to explain this a little bit further. The road allowance of George Street and Queen Street are actually... You can see them in this aerial photography. We're only able to recognize the frontage of the piece that's touching the road allowance of Queen Street. There's plenty of frontage there, but because of the way our bylaw is written, that's the only piece that's actually touched... Touching on a publicly maintained right-of-way. So we have to recognize that only 9.5 meters of frontage exists when the requirement is 12 meters for this zone. So it's just... It's something that if we do go ahead and extend George Street further south, which is what we've proposed in... By the lay of the land in this area, or Queen Street going further west, they will have adequate frontage on to a municipally maintained road allowance. So in terms of our planning advisory committee meeting we held a couple of weeks ago, the questions that did come up by the members was whether... Or why the cost of extending services was being borne by the person purchasing the property, and why wasn't the municipality funding that extension? We do have a bylaw currently in effect that puts all extension requests on the person purchasing the property or wanting to develop the property. If they want any type of exemption from that bylaw, they'd have to come to council to request that. They have not done that as part of this process, so that's where it sits right now. The second part was whether or not the winter road maintenance standards would have to change as a result of this development happening. Based on the photos that we've seen, those are currently what we're doing right now. You may have to pile the snow a little bit further towards Kinross, but other than that, it shouldn't be a huge undertaking for our roads crew. So the recommendation from PAC, and I fully support this recommendation, was to approve the application as presented, recognizing that 9.5 or 9.3 meter frontage as well as part of this. Are there any questions?
I'll ask council first for any questions? No? Because this is a public meeting, we're also opening questions from the audience as well, so if anybody... Mike, would you like to come forward and speak into the microphone, please?
Sure. I'm gonna put my Golden Corridor snowdrifter hat on for this one. I wasn't aware of this, but I see where that house is going, is going to affect the trail that comes in from the A110Q that comes into town that heads over to George Street. So the trail comes in from the left there, it'll go in front of that where the new house is going. The groomer turns around there. Sleds go down the street and then back over to Canadian Tire Gas Bar and McDonald's. Is that gonna affect... You just mentioned about piling snow up there.
Oh, yes. It's not going to affect... It's gonna look exactly like it says now. It's not gonna... We're not gonna block this in or anything like that. The snow will just get piled more in here.
Okay, now, the other thing is, somebody's gonna build a house there, next thing you know, they're gonna go to town complaining, "There's sleds right in front of my house 11 o'clock at night." I want that closed off. And we have no other access to get to Canadian Tire or McDonald's. We used to come through the park, but then we were cut off when we did Kinross Pond. I would much prefer to go through the park again, remove those rocks and go on the far side, on the west side, but you don't want any sledge running on there.
No, it's certainly not something... It's a liability issue for the park.
So I just wanna make sure that I don't come back here in a year or two and say, "Well, you guys can't access that anymore."
Ashley, are the potential landowners, are they aware of the snowmobiling activity in the area?
I have no... I can't comment on whether or not they know. I know that their relatives live right across the street of where this is going, so they would be fully aware of that. It's something I can certainly bring to their attention so that they are aware as part of the purchase and sale agreement. We haven't finalized that part yet.
Right, because obviously, snowmobiling is a priority for the municipality as well. So, okay.
Because we have several access points into town, around town. So if you cut that one off, you know, it creates problems.
Yeah, I think we can all agree that the intent here is not to cut off the snowmobiling activity and make sure that the potential landowners are aware of it, that it's not gonna change.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any other questions from the audience? Okay.
I have a resolution that is moved by Councilor Mino, seconded by Councilor Barker, that council directs the town planner to proceed with zoning application number 26 by rezoning approximately 0.63 acres on George Street from rural to residential low-density in order to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling and that a bylaw be brought forward for consideration to the next regular meeting.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Okay, adjournment?
It's moved by Councilor Mino, seconded by Councilor Barker, that council adjourns its special meeting of February 6th, 2018 to a regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Thanks, Ashley. Yes, Mike? Okay, we're... I'm not sure... Can people hear us now, or...
I can't, but there's people behind us.
Okay.
Maybe try to speak directly to the mic.
Yeah, I mean, next to swallowing this thing, I... It's black, I can't really see it, so I can just imagine I'm gonna hit this thing eventually.
What I would like to mention to anybody who does come up, to please make sure that you do lean into the microphone when you speak. Not only are we recording, but it is the speakers.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting of council to order for February 6th, 2018. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Well, now, approval of the agenda?
I have a motion that's moved by Councilor Mino, seconded by Councilor Kylie. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of February 6th, 2018 as presented.
All in favor? Declaration of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Petitions and delegations? So we're gonna begin with the petitions and delegations to the Bernhardt and Morissette taxation review, and I just want to sort of read the rules of the road. We're gonna limit each presenter to 10 minutes, just like we did last time. There's... Because we have people from different sides of the issue speaking tonight, we want to make sure that all questions are addressed through the chair, if there's any. And also, we want to be respectful of each other's comments, and... Am I forgetting anything? Okay, so we'll start with April Swanson and Mark Rosenger, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the chance to explain our situation and how the tax increase will end our plans for future in Morissette Township. During the presentation in November, it was implied that residents were choosing to live in Bernhardt and Morissette Townships as a tax avoidance measure. This is simply not the case, particularly for us. With my scent allergies, I am unable to join my backyard if my neighbors are doing laundry. Needless to say, my dream property has no close neighbors, and the search for a suitable property began. I grew up on Highway 11 in an unorganized township and would have been happy to go back there. Then we had a look at lots 28 and 29 in Morissette Township, and just loved all the trees and really liked the proximity to town. Even though it was within-town limits and taxes would be higher, it was estimated that we would be paying what we are now in town, so we thought we'd be no worse off, which is approximately $3,3500. In October of 2015, we purchased lots 28 and 29 in Morissette Township. As part of the working poor, we are making improvements as we can afford to. During the summer of 2016, we created a driveway and added a portable building and brought in hydro. In September 2017, we had the well drilled and purchased some components for the septic system. In addition to the installation of the septic system, a well pump and the required water lines, future plans include a garage with a workshop and a modest two-bedroom house. Since we have begun work on our property, at least three other lots have also been under construction. Although we cannot speak for our neighbors, if the tax rates are increased, our plans will come to a grinding halt and our sweat equity will amount to nothing. Based on comparable properties, our taxes will be approximately $8,000 to $10,000, and that's simply not affordable to us, and we're not willing to pay that outrageous amount. We are thankful that we are in a more fortunate position than some because we have no permanent structures. We can cut our losses, move the portable buildings we have brought in and the other components, essentially undo most of the progress we have made to recoup as much of the resources and costs to start over on another property outside of town limits. The extra fuel costs from driving from a bit further out of town limits would be more than made up for by the difference in taxes. In summary, the tax rates make no difference to our desire to live in the country versus in town. It was only a mitigating factor when we considered property within the town limits. If the proposed tax rate increase is approved, our plans for our property will be destroyed. We will be putting the property up for sale, and unfortunately, the tax rates will likely work against us being able to sell it. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you, April. I forgot to mention if... For the record, if you could just state your name and your address when you start your presentation. Next person on the list is Brian. Brian Coglan. Brian, if you'll indulge me just for two seconds, being a former counselor and being part of this table, I'd like to just express our condolences to your recent loss and my heartfelt condolences for that.
Thank you. I don't see a clock. Just in case I run over. But thank you for the opportunity to talk here tonight. The reason I'm here is to present a petition to you, and I'm going to read that petition that we circulated a few months back. This was before Christmas, and what it says is this, from the residents of Morissette and Bernhardt Township. "We are opposed to council dissolving the urban service area tax structure for the town of Kirkland Lake. Rescinding this bylaw will create a 100% tax rate for the residents of Morissette and Bernhardt, which is unfair and unaffordable. We presently do not receive 97% services from the town of Kirkland Lake as stated recently by the town CAO. We support amending the current urban service area bylaw 8383. Failing this, we support de-annexation from the town of Kirkland Lake." Now, this was signed by 102 residents of Bernhardt and Morissette. So I'm here to speak for them. And I'm not sure how I'm coming across here, but if I'm not being heard very well, let me know.
No, I think you're fine.
Okay, thank you. In 1982, the town annexed the townships of Morissette and Bernhardt and attempted to implement 100% taxation phased in over 10 years. The township residents objected, and in 1984, the OMB settled the dispute. The town, by an order of council from the OMB, was directed to implement a bylaw where Morissette and Bernhardt would only share an amount no greater than 35% of all the capital and operating municipal costs. The OMB decision was based primarily on a taxation study conducted by Terry Bender from the Ministry of Housing. Bylaw 8383, which defines the urban service area, was submitted by the town and approved by the OMB. The town's taxation structure is referred to as an urban service area, where Tech Township is the urban service center that has a 100% tax rate, and Morissette and Bernhardt, the underlying areas, has a tax rate of 35%. The tax rates was first raised by the CAO at Hockey Heritage North here, when he first speculated a tax increase to around 60 or 70%. The CAO then come back with an inaccurate attempt to justify 100% taxation, claiming we presently receive 97% service. Pick up the garbage and implement a uniform tax rate of 100% was the proposal. This is just not realistic. We don't get 97% services. It just doesn't exist out there, okay? So that particular proposal does not hold water for us. The other thing with respect to your options is this really contradicts option number four. If we are getting 97% service, then why would you be proposing phasing in services when you claim you already receive them? This is contradictory, and you can check this with your option four as we move through it. Council's faced with four options for consideration. Option one, the status quo, I do not support this option. The town will lose money, and that's not in the spirit of the OMB ruling. The new legislation for sewer and water makes you back out the sewer and water amounts, which lowers the taxation amount. So this impacts the tax calculation negatively, and it actually reduced our taxes this year by about 5%. So I personally don't support that. I think the town is justified in taking the rates up 5%, but that's where it ends, okay? Option two, hire consultant. I think the original report that was done by Terry Bender is still fairly reliable because nothing has changed out there. He was a tax... An area taxation expert, and he come in and went through the whole thing and come up with the recommendation of 35%, and that's how Judge Single ruled, based on that study. So, you know, it really is still... I think it can be relied on. Now, one thing I want to comment on is the downloading of services that Mr. Augustus was referred to here. And Todd, you were here, and so were you, Norm, with me as the finance chair, when Mike Harris downloaded all those services, right? And we dealt with it, and we dealt with it quite well. You know, we borrowed from reserves, we paid back the reserves, and we downsized, and it was a good job done by all. Now, the other thing that Mike Harris did at that time was he formed area service boards. And these area service boards were designed to collect money from all the other townships and the districts, okay? And this is why you have DSAB. So the downloading of the services to Kirkland Lake, when we had our own welfare person and funded... Was funded by the province, but it still cost us a lot of money. The point I'm trying to make is that the area service boards allowed the district to tamiskamine to collect money and took the burden off the municipality. So that really, that whole thing, generally speaking, really is revenue neutral. You're not really incurring that much more cost there, and I think Alex Thompson did a really good job in his spreadsheet analysis regarding the downloaded services, reviewing the original bylaw and those cost centers, and what you got today. So in conclusion, I don't think that there's been a great impact out there with respect to the social net and the other things that Alex referred to in his spreadsheet. Excuse me here, just gotta get back on track. So hiring a consultant to redo all this, I don't really think is necessary, and I can understand why, you know, that option would not be selected because, you know, money's tight, and I understand that, more than a lot of people, all right? So I can understand why this would not be an option for you. It would be nice to bring in a tax expert, but money's tight, okay? So I understand that, and I think everybody else would too. Adopt a special area rating is option number three, similar to Kalani, Elliott Lake, Sudbury, and West Nippising. What does that mean? I would like that clarified because, to me, it appears, based on conversations that Peter here has made and so on, that you're gonna be creating more taxation areas. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't fully understand this recommendation, and I think if council is going to select an option from here, I think the information that you got in front of you is not enough. I need details of this. If I was sitting here voting, I couldn't... I wouldn't know what to vote on because I don't understand it, and I'm not sure anybody else here understands it either, you know? If you do, explain it to me. Okay? Option number four, incrementally phasing in uniform tax rate in property municipal services. Well, you know what? That won't work. You cannot afford to go out there and start building roads and putting all that money out to provide these services when you look at the amount of tax revenues you're gonna get. It just simply won't work, you know? And I just... I don't think I gotta get into the examples about the roads and this and that and the other thing because the services out there are lacking, you know? We don't get a lot of things. So you're gonna look at that realistically and weigh that against the tax revenues you're gonna get, and it's just not affordable. It really isn't. So I think that option is just out of reach, you know, simply put. Now, option number five is what we are... I am proposing. I think the most effective approach on taxation is to amend the current bylaw, and the people on this petition that I'm going to give to Joanna afterwards support that. You got their signatures. This is something that they've looked at, and it's realistic. You have an existing tax structure in place, okay? And it's worked since 1984. Now, you know, agreed, there's been changes, there's been a lot of things that have happened, but the reality is, is that you have a mechanism that you know will work. If you get into restructuring the town into all kinds of other various tax rates and so on, it's gonna turn out to be an administrative nightmare. So you're better off to stick with what you know. And this tax rate needs updating? Agreed, okay? No doubt. We understand, you know, if you gotta take it up, but that's acceptable by most people, certainly is by me. But I think what you got in place there works, and I think Mike Gimo, you know, demonstrated in his presentation that the town is going to continue to receive annual increases in tax revenues. So you're gonna get a nice steady curve upwards, you know, the kind of curve that you want for returns? And that's the sort of thing that you want, but the other thing that's extremely important is that you want development, and God knows Kirkland Lake needs it, you know? You need that sort of thing. You need people to come here, and sure, they wanna live on lakes, and, you know, they'll invest the money. But if you drive those tax rates up too high, there's not gonna be any of that. People just won't build, and you got an example of it right here, okay? So, you know, it's a fine line. You guys gotta weigh your decision. You gotta decide, you know, how much are you prepared to take it up? If you take it up too much, there'll be a sell-off, and everybody loses. The people that are selling their houses, the town and the revenues, there'll be no more development. It will not work, okay? So what I'm suggesting here to you today is to look at this bylaw that you have in place and adjust it upwards, but don't take it up too much. I think the people out there are reasonable in that they, you know, they will pay... We've been paying our share, okay? Because you're getting it with higher assessment, but it will become unaffordable if it goes too high. So I'm here today, and I'm one person representing 102 people that have signed. You know, I've worked with this committee, who've done a great job in analyzing it. I think you've got great information there, and I agree with it all, but I really think that you gotta think... Really think about how you're gonna handle this. Very, very important decision that impacts a lot of people, and we need a decision, all right? It's gone on long enough, people are stressed out, something's gotta happen, we need a vote on this. Once that vote happens, then we take it back to the people. We have a public meeting. We have a public meeting, and then the people decide as to what they want to do. If it's reasonable and if they accept it, we move on. If it's not reasonable, then the people out there are going to have to look at it and decide what they want to do, and they'll be looking at other options. So I appeal to your good sense, you know, and your common sense, just to make the right decision.
Thank you.
Next up is Mike Gimo. Would you like to come forward, Mike? And again, introduce yourself and your address, please.
Mike Gimo, 66 Bernhardt. Is that better? Okay. Mike Gimo, 66 Bernhardt Drive, Goodfish Lake. There might be a little bit of repetition in my presentation you heard that Brian just mentioned, but that's all right. I just want to hand this out to members here. Thank you for, the council for letting me speak again. I'm a little disappointed that there's one councillor who's missed both of these important sessions. I don't know if he's away on holidays or medical or whatever. It's unfortunate because this is going to be an important vote, and I think, hopefully he'll get all the information. Now, these are my personal observations.
Everybody will be circulated with all the information, or rest assured.
Good, thank you. Now, these are my personal observations and comments, has nothing to do with the committee that I was a part of. Now, council here is in a difficult position. You've been forced to make a tough decision, and I don't envy you. For 34 years, Bernhardt and Morissette have existed in harmony with the town of Kirkland Lake. We've received and asked for no services, and we've paid our fair share of taxes. As I explained last week, our average tax is equal to the average tax in Kirkland Lake, and with our assessment increase, we will be higher by 2020. We've had several councils, three or four C A Os, this issue has never come up. New C E O comes in, he accidentally discovers that there's a different tax rate for Bernhardt and Morissette, looks into the matter, makes a report to council suggesting to modernize the tax rate, that we should be paying ninety-seven percent out there. Council has him have an information session with the residents out there where he tries to convince us that we're getting ninety-seven percent of the services. Well, we all, that's a lot of whatever. At the last council meeting, Alex Thompson did an excellent job dissecting the budget line by line, and he showed everyone that basically the only downloads were ambulance services and M P A C, which is approximately five percent of the budget. And I agree with Mr. Coglan that the town's losing money with the sewer being taken out of the tax bill, and there should be an adjustment there. I agree with that also. Adam Orth presented the same thing on his own. He arrived at the same conclusion. So now it's been two weeks since the presentation. There's been no rebuttal from staff about our figures, so I'm assuming that they accept them. Because if they didn't agree with them, something would have been mentioned in the paper or in the press. Over the years, I've seen presentations made by staff to council on decisions to be made where staff might steer council in a certain way, just letting them know what kind of information to discern to them. An example, not to counsel directly, but the presentation on the airport. I wasn't able to attend, unfortunately, because I had another commitment that night. But that was, in my opinion, from what I've talked to people about, that was set up to make the airport undesirable and that we should get rid of it. We were told, excuse me, my thing's frozen. We were told that the airport needed $3 million in upgrades to keep it operational, $500,000 for fuel tank, $100,000 for a hangar door, extension of the runway, resurfacing of the runway, and a few other things. Now, the tanks out there are fiberglass, double-walled, they're buried in sand in an escarp. You can't get a better environment for fuel tanks that are buried. I'm sure if you dug them up, you'd find them in pretty good condition. A hangar door, $100,000. We haven't had a hangar door for 20 years. All of a sudden, it's a priority. So if you can see where I'm going with this, things are pointed in a certain direction to try to make the airport undesirable or that we should get rid of it. Now, the net cost of the airport is $75,000 a year after revenue and landing fees and all that. That works out to $205 a day. If you take out the decertification, which is another $20,000, brings it out to $55,000. $150 a day.
Okay, Mike, I'm just, I'm going to have to keep you on topic here, okay? We're not, we're not really here to discuss the airport tonight. There will be other opportunities for that, if you could.
I'm just trying to make a point that sometimes staff likes to steer towards certain things, but I can move on, that's fine.
At the end of the day, though, I mean, it, the responsibility rests with council to decipher what information we're given. And certainly the information that you're giving, that Brian's giving, that everybody else is giving is very important to us, and we're listening to it. Staff certainly come at it from their own perspective, and that's, we don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
But, I mean, we will ask, you know, those questions, those tough questions when the time is right.
Okay. So council is being told that as a result of the changes in the municipal act, you have the right to dissolve eighty-three dash eighty-three, and because they've done it in other areas. Now, my question is, are these situations the same as ours where we've had an O M B mandated judge's ruling? Or are these other areas where the towns have grown and basically took over some other areas that were adjacent and just made a special tax rate with them? But now, as the municipalities have grown, there's no need for that special tax rate? Is it the same situation or is it a different situation? That's my question. I've just handed out a printout to the members of council, and basically it shows what each increment above the thirty-five percent actually is in the tax increase. And you also have to remember, as I mentioned last week, we're getting a forty-one percent increase in our average assessment. We're halfway through that increase now. And we're also, if I'm, I'm not sure you haven't done your budget yet, but we were told last fall that the town's looking at an eighteen percent increase in taxes. So we would be hit with a triple whammy, triple increase. Like I said at the start, council has been placed in a tough spot, and I'm glad I'm not in your position because whatever decision you make will probably not be very popular with the residents of Bernhardt and Morissette. So thank you very much.
Okay, next up is Annie Camita. Again, if you could introduce yourself and state your address, please.
I'm Annie Camita. I live at Five Deloy Crescent. I'll try to make my presentation a little shorter than my letter, so I'll leave out a few things, but I'm hoping that council will still read them. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to express yet another opinion regarding the tax policy modernization that's been put forward by Mr. Augustus and his staff. In 2017, my husband and I decided to build our retirement home on the cottage lot located at Five Deloy Crescent. Imagine our surprise when we learned that the ruling put in place in 1984 by the O M B was being put at risk as a result of the C A O's recommendation to modernize the tax policy and increase the percentage used to calculate the municipal taxes for the two townships from thirty-five percent in relation to the services received to that of a full potential hundred percent, and as a result, our annual municipal tax levy could increase from $12,000 from approximately what we figured would be about $4,000. The thought was sickening, given the fact that we were well under construction and there was no turning back. Now, I've heard that the C A O is only doing his job, and this may true. However, the presentations made by concerned residents of Morissette and Bernhardt Township on January 23rd demonstrate that the job was not complete and that the suggestion regarding tax policy modernization was presented before all the factors were considered. The F A Qs provided by the C A O quickly compared the two townships to the residential areas of Shappy Hughes, Swastika, and Harvey Kirkland without taking into consideration the ruling of the O M B, the fact that the services provided to the two townships have not changed or increased since the ruling was established in 1984, and all the while ramping up the current displeasure in the community over the controversy that has been caused by issues of brown water and the new swimming pool. During the two public meetings regarding the new tax policy modernization, residents of the affected area were invited to speak, and together with the presentations made on January 23rd, an abundance of information has been provided by the presenters to support the fact that the municipal taxes currently paid by property owners from Morissette and Bernhardt Township are more than enough compared to the services received. The demonstrations have, the presentations have demonstrated that our property assessments are high as a result of the factor that our area is highly desired as a location to have a home in spite of the lack of municipal services. The information presented repeatedly demonstrates repeatedly that the taxes currently paid compared to the services received are more than fair, and therefore there's no need to continue to state the obvious. What I would like to address is a comment made by the C A O during the November 14th, 2017 open house where he stated something to the effect of, "In return for the modernization to the tax rate, the townships would receive improved roads and garbage pickup." This is my response. "The O M B ruling of 1984 indicates that the town of Kirkland Lake would need to demonstrate that the services have been increased or improved before the tax rate could be increased, and while I have not seen the printed copy, I interpret that ruling requires that the services are to be in place in order to revise the tax rate, and a simple promise to provide would not suffice. I do not believe that the C A O's declaration that we supposedly receive ninety-seven percent of the municipal services and that garbage pickup is the only service that is missing should be considered to be adequate proof as required in the O M B ruling. Suppose the municipal council for the town of Kirkland Lake went ahead with the C A O's suggestion of improved roads and garbage pickup. I ask, what roads will be improved and to what extent? Goodfish Road is approximately 10 kilometers of tar and chip surface treatment. Airport Road is another 1 kilometer. In Goodfish Lake subdivision, there are approximately 2 kilometers of road that currently meet municipal standards, and there are probably another 1 to 2 kilometers that do not. In the Nettie Lake subdivision, there are approximately 8 kilometers of road that do not meet municipal standards. The approximate cost of the road construction, not including the provision of water or sewer infrastructure, and depending on road conditions, the need to blast rock and build an appropriate road base is somewhere between $750,000 to $1 million per kilometer. The work is required, that is required to bring the roads up to a municipal standard is significantly more than the replacement of a few culverts or the widening of a corner or two. The roads in the Nettie Lake area are glorified ATV trails comprised of beach sand, gravel, and some surface rock. The roads are narrow and in many areas do not provide enough room for two vehicles to pass one another, and motorists are often required to pull over into the bush to let the other pass. The C A O's presentation on November 14th and the F A Qs provided on the municipality's website are all about fairness of taxation. That being said, a township consists of 36 square miles. Would every property owner in the geographic area of Morissette and Bernhardt Township be provided with the same level of services in order for the town to implement the tax modernization policy? Would road improvements, what road improvements will be made? Will they be limited to the Nettie Lake and Goodfish Lake subdivisions, or will they extend to the cottages of Joyce Lake and beyond? It should be noted that the improvements to the Goodfish Lake subdivision were completed by Roger Harvey before they were transferred to the town, and the improvements to the Nettie Lake subdivision have been funded through fees paid to the Nettie Lake Road Commission and later paid directly to the town as a user fee. How will the residents of Kirkland Lake, who are already irate over the issues with the increased cost of a new swimming pool, react when they're told? In order to modernize the tax rate for the townships of Morissette and Bernhardt, the town will need to spend upwards to $10 million to provide those 80 or so taxpayers with the services that are lacking. As a C A O of a municipality, I'm fully aware that there are often federal and provincial government funding available for such road projects, and I'm also aware that in order to obtain such funding, there must be a municipal contribution. Where will that contribution come from? Is it sitting in a reserve waiting to be spent? And if so, why hasn't it been used for the underserviced area of Harvey Kirkland that the C A O was quick to compare our townships with? If there's no reserve funds available, will additional debt be incurred? I can only imagine how the residents of a potholed-riddled street such as McCamus, Harding, McKelvey, the section of Taylor between Lebel and Wood Street will feel when they're told that they're put at the bottom of the list for yet another year because the town needs to upgrade the roads in Bernhardt and Morissette area in order to modernize the existing tax rate for the two townships that are currently underserviced. It should be recognized that it's not economically feasible to compare, to complete a major road project just to justify overturning the O M B's ruling and approve the C A O's proposal of tax modernization policy. It should be recognized that it will take years, if not decades, to recover the cost of a major road project in the Nettie Lake and Bernhardt Townships, and such costs will only contribute to the financial struggle that Kirkland Lake faces. The taxes that are contributed by the townships of Morissette and Bernhardt Township are insignificant in comparison to the cost of a significant road project, and while they are insignificant to the overall tax revenues of Kirkland Lake, they are significant on an individual basis to each property owner of those townships, and that any increase would be devastating. At one of the open meetings, the C A O was even daring enough to throw out the idea to residents who reside within the urban center that any increase in taxes collected from Morissette and Bernhardt Township could potentially result in their taxes being reduced. I'm not sure how that statement could even be made. Obviously, the C A O had not considered the O M B ruling and the cost that would be incurred to improve the services that are presently lacking prior to any tax increase taking place. The tax modernization policy will, without a doubt, impact the taxpayers in the urban area of Kirkland Lake. However, it will be, it will not be in a positive direction, as indicated by the C A O. The impact will be negative for all taxpayers, as the town will be required to make significant improvements to services provided to the Morissette and Bernhardt Townships that will be funded using municipal revenues collected from the entire municipality. As a result of the capital cost that will be required, the taxes overall will most likely increase beyond the 18% that the C A O is projected, to something higher. Does this make sense? No. I believe that this is an empty suggestion, only increased, only increased tension within the community, and was intended to provide incentive to the residents of the Yeremburn community to push the municipal council to accept his recommendation. Now suppose the town does increase the municipal tax rate for Morissette and Bernhardt Township. It's been established at previous meetings that the Goodfish Lake and Nettie Lake subdivisions have become desirable locations to purchase a house due to the existing affordable tax in spite of increased property assessments. It's well-known by individuals working on the municipal field that assessment values established by M P A C are based on recent real estate transactions. It was also established at previous meetings that if the annual municipal tax rate were to increase, it's likely that the Goodfish Lake and Nettie Lake area would not only, would not be as desirable. Demand will drop and assessments will then fall. The reduction in assessment values that will be experienced will then drop, will result in a drop in municipal tax revenues. The reduction in tax revenues for those neighborhoods will then impact the overall municipal tax revenues, thus requiring the town to increase taxes for the entire municipality. A drop in the municipal tax revenue will extend the payback period for the costly road project that was required to be undertaken in order to modernize the tax policy. It will be a vicious circle. Now, so far, we've just talked about roads, what's next? Snow removal, garbage pickup, fire protection, and who would even want to anticipate the costs of water and sewer? In terms of snow removal, currently the residents receiving snow removal pay for it directly under a separate user fee. Those who don't are not charged. In the Nettie Lake subdivision, there's a combination of approximately 42 cottages and permanent homes. Approximately 50 of those properties do not have year-round access because of the absence of snow removal. Going back to the initial concept relating to the C A O's tax policy modernization that will provide fairness in taxation, will those properties, as well as the properties on Joyce Lake, then receive snow removal? This new service will require the town to hire additional employees and/or equipment. This additional service will not come without a cost. Garbage pickup in a rural area that is surrounded by bush and wildlife is only a recipe- Garbage pickup in a rural area that is surrounded by bush and wildlife is only a recipe for disaster. Garbage pickup with the residential area, uh, garbage pickup within the residential area is barely adequate at best. One can only imagine pails of garbage sitting on the rural road or piled as a central pickup area in the middle of a bear's playground. Excuse me.
Annie, I'm just gonna give you another two minutes, okay?
Okay.
We've gone over already, but I'm gonna give, give you a bit more latitude.
Um, what I wanted to say was that the cost, um, the taxpayers in the township of Bernhardt and Morissette have been portrayed as persons who pay minimal taxes while receiving ninety percent of the services. I'm sure that the construction of our home is compared by many to that in the new King George subdivision and would, and it would be reasonable to some that we should be taxed at the same level. When discussing development within the municipality of Kirkland Lake, it should be remembered that when a new property or subdivision is developed within the urban center, the town must incur costs relating to the installation of water and sewer. Those costs can be in the tens of thousands. When we, uh, when my husband and I decided to build on our property, the cash outlay for water and septic was made by us and us alone with no contribution being expected from the town. The cost of our building permit was, was paid through, to provide services, um, the services provided by the building department. If we use the dump, we pay dumping fees and if we have snow removal and repairs to the roads, we pay that through a user fee. Um, basically, I'm saying that any, um, cost that the town incurs, they get it back um, through the sale of their property and it takes, um, a long period of time. We don't ask the town for any kind of a contribution for our services. In recent weeks, my husband and I learned that prior to the three houses being built, our house was the only new construction in the entire town for two thousand seventeen. Several projects, other renovation projects were undertaken and two in particular are in the Morissette and Bernhardt Township. In the same townships, there's approximately five new driveways that have been installed, most likely in anticipation of new construction. However, I'm not sure that those property owners are going to be going forward. They're probably waiting to see what happens with this modernization. In conclusion, I hope that my information has continued to fill in the blanks that were left. I hope that the C A O will begin to hold the decision put forward in the nineteen eighty-four O M B ruling with the same regard as he does for the municipal act. I hope that my presentation will assist the municipal council and determine that there's no economic benefit to be achieved with this suggested approach is put forward in the C A O's tax modernization policy. And I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to present to the council reasons why, um, the, 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 um, whole issue has to be studied in order to be able to determine what should be done in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Next up is Jeff Molino. I think I pronounced that right.
Close enough. Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present. My name is Jeff Molino. I am a resident of one hundred Bernhardt Drive in Kirkland Lake. So I also represent, I'm here representing my father who is vacationing in the south. He and I are co-owners of one oh two Bernhardt. I'd like to just start a little bit with why I'm here, meaning in Kirkland Lake. So I came as a student in nineteen ninety-seven and I fully intended to be here for three years, do my school and leave. And after a year, I decided that it wasn't such a bad place and I might stick around and I purchased a house in Chappie Hughes. Now, the house that I bought, I paid seventy-five hundred dollars for that house. My tax bill was six hundred and eighty dollars a year. So about eight and a half percent of the purchase price per year. And that's what I was paying in taxes with full services. So I would say from hindsight, that seems to be an unreasonable ratio. Now, it was also a very inexpensive house, but regardless, percentage-wise, it seems very unreasonable. Fast forward, I left Kirkland Lake because there was, at the time, very few good-paying jobs. So I, of course, followed the money and went south and I was down there for my career. And a few years back, in the end of two thousand fourteen, an opportunity came up, which I saw as a golden opportunity. Come back to Kirkland Lake, put down roots and to take up a good-paying job that would have a good economic benefit to the town and to the area. So I'm currently, uh, the executive director of the Materials Joining Innovation Center, uh, at the college and we, we definitely do a lot of good in the community. We help out. That's why I'm here. I'm here because I believe Kirkland Lake as a community is a great place to be. So when we left Oshawa, the house that we had down there, we sold it and we bought on Goodfish Lake. And essentially, the, the transaction was, was equal. What we sold in Oshawa, we bought in Kirkland Lake, purchase price-wise. The taxes that I was paying in Oshawa, the taxes that I'm currently paying in Goodfish were about the same. So even with a thirty-five percent discount on the Kirkland Lake tax rate, the taxes are about the same. And when I say the taxes, I'm including the road fees in that because I consider that part of my taxes. So when it comes to fairness in actual dollar figures paid in taxes, I think that we are absolutely pulling our fair share. Even without the, the benefit of all the other services, because we chose to live out there and we deal with what we have. But tripling the amount of taxes that are paid by the residents in the Goodfish Bernhardt area is not a reasonable expectation. So I would just like to ask the council to really look at the fairness of the taxation. As Mike has, Mike Gimo has stated, we are all looking at significant tax increases already. My tax burden is going to be increasing by thirty-six percent, um, over, by twenty-twenty, by the phase-in period just because of the assessment increase. Any tax rate increase will be on top of that. So already, it's looking worse than when I bought the place. But regardless, one oh two Bernhardt, my father and I purchased the vacant lot this summer before all these issues came up. And the, the thought is that maybe down the road, he can have a place where rather, once they're a little too old to be going to Texas for, for the, for the winter, maybe there's, there would be a place for them next door to us. Or maybe we, we just have to build a bigger house and, and make room for them in our house. Right now, as it stands, the plans have changed and we'll probably build a tree fort on the property as long as Vic doesn't object. So that's where we're at. We have, we've completely, uh, put that, that plan, not even on the back burner, it's off the table right now. And, um, unless things change or not, um, it will remain off the table. So my point and my only point is that the fixation on the thirty-five percent tax rate seems to be beyond the, the understanding of actual dollar figures. And the presentations that were made in the last meeting were very clear that as residents, we are paying our fair share and tripling that amount is not reasonable. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, the next presenter is Chris Beeson and, uh, again, just ask to, uh, introduce yourself and your address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Beeson and I have, uh, three properties in Chappie Hughes, six oh six, six ten and six thirty Government Road West. I'm here to enter into this debate. It's my first time appearing before council, not my first time participating. Usually, my preferred method to participate in municipal politics would be to attend at town hall, attend at the clerk's office, give my point of view, ask that the clerk pass on a memo to counselors and the mayor. Maybe you've seen them come through. I've done it on several occasions. What really brings me here today is, uh, what happened at the town hall, is the town hall meeting back in November. It was reported in the northern news. A resident who didn't live in these two townships in question tried to enter the debate given opposing point of view, was met with loud jeers, how it was reported in the northern news. I think it's great to be passionate and involved in the community and council. That's great. But we have to be tolerant. We have to be tolerant and listen to all points of view. And it doesn't really matter as far as my, as far as I see it, where in the community you live. If you have an estate on a lake at Goodfish, if you live in apartment in Chappie Hughes or a bungalow in Swastika, you might live in public housing up on Pollock Avenue or in Extender Care. If you have something to say to this council and you are recognized by the chair and your message is lawful, I mean, no, no hate, it's not profane, not slanderous, those kind of things. You are lawful, have a message, you have the right to be heard and you must be heard. So I'm, I, I'm disappointed that I didn't hear anything from council. Trying to let the people of the community know that when they come here and if they have a view, that maybe they're in the minority, but they have a point of view, that they're going to be safe, safe from bullying, safe from jeers or harassment, that they're gonna be safe to be heard. Nobody's saying you have to agree with the speaker, but they have the right to be heard. So that brings me here today, so I'm gonna give some points of view on this debate. But before I do, you know, when, when people, if people disrespect the speaker at a, at a meeting sanctioned by this council, they're not only disrespecting the speaker, they're disrespecting the council. They're disrespecting every single person in this town. Because council represents every single person in this town. So, you know, I, I, I found the silence by council deafening. That you did not get up and say, "Look at, to the people of this community, you're safe, you can come here. You don't have to agree with these people who are speaking. You can have your own point of view." Because frankly, I think the, any opposition to the, to the delegation that we've heard and, you know, they're, they're great. They're prominent townspeople, respected and I respect them. But, you know, people are afraid now to come here. When I was researching this little thing and I went on a website, town's website and there was a, a little, uh, just popped up at me, Kirkland Lake Council wants you at meetings. Six counselors, the mayor, all made a statement, "We gotta get more people involved." Well, it's not gonna happen if councils stay silent when we have jeering and bullying. So I, I, I just disappointed, you know. I think council should make a, make a public press statement or public statement.
Okay, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with anything you're saying, Chris, but we're, we're here tonight to discuss the modernization of the tax structure in Bernhardt and Morissette. So if you have something to contribute to that, we, we're here to hear it.
I'll get right to it. Uh, just, uh, I, I think there's a lot of people who feel like me but who are not, who are afraid to be here and take my point of view, uh, an opposing point of view to the delegation and that's, I just like council to be aware of that. That they've been silenced because they're afraid. So I'll get right to the point. Okay, so if I'm gonna enter this debate, I would like to say that water and sewer issues, I get three water and sewer bills and I get three tax bills. They're separate. They're not part of this debate. I've read in the papers, people were concerned because they pay more insurance for one reason or another. Insurance rates are set by people in towers on Bay Street or Wall Street or wherever big city these insurance companies happen to have their heads. This council doesn't sell insurance as far as I know. You know, with these townships, we annexed them and by we, I mean the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake, which I'm a part, a citizen. So we must deliver the services. Far as I knew, there was an agreement. You know, if they don't get garbage pickup, let's pick up the garbage. That's our obligation. They don't have streetlights, let's go in our warehouse. Grab a few dozen streetlights, let's put them up. These people deserve it. That's part of the agreement. I read in the paper that it would cost fifty thousand dollars to study this. Well, last week I was here in this very building at the open house and I met some very interesting people who are running departments. They're fine people, they're qualified. I wouldn't trust, question their integrity for a minute to do a study on this. And I think they're all professional enough that if they ran into some sort of roadblock or problem or something, they would ask for help so that any study that needs to be done could be done by people that we already have. I was really impressed with the quality of the professionals that we have. I read, uh, in the paper, one of the solutions may be a special area. Make a special tax area. Well, I think if there are any special residences out there, maybe seasonal residences, cottages, not year-round permanent residents. I don't see those as special. We all know when you purchase a home, you build a home, the bigger the home, the bigger the tax bill. It's, that's just the way it goes. If I do improvements to my properties in Chappie Hughes, I build a fifty or sixty thousand dollar garage and I buy a building permit, I know my taxes are gonna go up. First, there's always somebody is gonna be at the top of the list for taxpayers, always. If you live in the most prestigious neighborhood in the community, chances are you're gonna be in the top one percentile paying tax. I looked at the presentation online for the, uh, these townships, road maintenance, that sort of thing. So I'm just going by that. Services, well, there's twenty-one services listed here that residents receive, big long list. Came right off the town's website. Says not available, curbside, garbage collection and some road maintenance. So I thought, well, let's see road maintenance. So it came out here, as far as if I'm reading this correctly, five point seven seven kilometers. Doesn't seem to me to be a lot of extra road maintenance. Doesn't seem to me to be a lot of extra road maintenance. We don't need new equipment to maintain 5.77 kilometers of road. To bring them up to a standard, a town of Kirkland Lake standard, we'll just drive on some of our roads, look at the problems we got, like get in line. I can think offhand of several communities who have one lane, streets that are only big enough for one car at a time, that cars have to pull over, let the other one through. If we have to fix some of those roads, put culverts in, grading, gravel, that's our obligation, let's do it. I've heard people say we don't get police protection the same as everybody else.
I'm just gonna give you the warning again, Chris, about the, it's 10 minutes, so I'll give you latitude as well as I did the other people.
Thank you, thank you. So, just far as police goes, well, I'd rather have the police on the highways than out watching the partridge cross the road at Medley Lake. There's no crime, they're not needed there. As far as people moving, I don't want to see anybody move, you know, but they move, they're not gonna take their house. Be aware, the town of Kirkland Lake is still gonna get their tax, because that's, house still gonna be a house there, somebody's gonna buy it. So I'm just gonna close, you know, I don't lose a lot of sleep worrying about what Bernhard Morissette has been paying. I just don't want council to be fooled by any smoke and mirrors, you know, millions of dollars of this, millions of dollars of that. I just want, when you make your decision, make it based on facts, and remember you represent every single person in this community, rich, poor, wherever they live. So, you know, just my last final statement is, I wouldn't wanna be the person to go and tell the young family in the town, you know, somewhere in Kirkland Lake, with all the bills and trials and tribulations that they're, you know, trying to meet their obligations, or the empty nesters, or now the kids are gone, so they're gonna try to get some, put away some money for retirement, or the retirees, I wouldn't wanna tell them, "Hey, you pay it 100%. These people out here in this nice prestigious neighborhood where everybody wants to live, are only gonna pay it 35%." I wouldn't wanna be that person, but anyways. That's all I have to say, Mayor, council, I appreciate the extra couple minutes.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, next presenter is Mike Panagopka. Mike presented at the last meeting as well, so could you, again, just introduce yourself, Mike, and your address?
Yes, sir. I'm Mike Panagopka, 86 Bernhard Drive. I will be fairly brief. First, just to answer one thing from the last presenter, the meeting in November was a public meeting?
Okay, this isn't a debate, we're just...
I'm sorry, okay. Just like to say that the presentation April Swanson made was excellent, and it's a great example of what will happen if things are adjusted out of bounds for what most people can handle. I'd also like to say that the presentation that Brian made, support all of the comments he made, and also would be in agreement with amending the original agreement being the simplest solution to go with, and as long as it's fair, and that would just get us to be able to move on. Mike Eemo made some good points, and I just wanted to refer to that page he handed out, if I could see a copy of that for a second, please. Just for the sake of the audience, because they cannot see this, it's just basically a simple table, and what it shows here is if the current rate was changed from 35% to 40, the nominal change is only 5%, but that is an actual 14.3% increase in actual taxes. So when you combine that with the assessment changes that are already being phased in, it's a massive change with even a very slight nominal change to that percentage. As another example, a 35 to 45% rate, so that's a 10% increase, is actually a 28.6% increase. So, again, just reiterating what Mike said, the point is that if that happened, there's any other adjustments to the town rates, and then add in the assessment changes, those are massive changes that when you get into any of those numbers, many people have many issues with that, and you'll be faced with some of the things that April said, and a lot of the great comments that Brian said. So I just wanted to reiterate that. One of the things I realized in the last two days was, one of the biggest frustrations for me psychologically with this entire situation is the lack of dialogue and understanding where we're going with this and hearing from you. So when we present, we're trying to guess what to say, we're trying to feel things out, and we really don't know where this is going. And I think that's what's causing the greatest anxiety with this, and it kind of reflects on what Brian said, which is, let's come up with something that makes sense, get this over with, so we can get back to sleep and get on with our lives, and you guys can move on to the half a million problems that you have as councillors. In conclusion, and what the point with that dialogue is that if we had some dialogue, we encourage you to review all the fantastic presentations that were made, there's a lot of great material, a lot of great points, a lot of evidence that, you know, if you wanted some support for where we got those numbers, they're all there, and they're all attainable. And so we encourage you to review that material and try to find, you know, the fair outcome for all of us. And, you know, it'd be nice to hear from you if you had any questions or needed to fine tune anything or any of your thoughts, to let us know, we're right here. So in conclusion, I support Brian's comments, a simple solution is amend the current agreement, and we're simply asking for a very fair and reasonable solution so we can get on with our lives. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Mike. Okay, that's the final speaker for the petitions and delegations. I just want to, once again, thank everyone, we extended this for one additional meeting to try and make sure that there was ample opportunity for everybody to be heard at an official capacity. It's certainly council's intent to deal with this as quickly as possible going forward. I do have some regrets on the way that things were, I'm just speaking myself personally, the order in which things were moved out, I kind of would have liked to hear council's thoughts as well initially, and hopefully have saved some of this, but this is a more sort of standard approach to dealing with these things, unfortunately, but I can assure you that council will try and resolve this as quickly as possible and come up with a solution. So, is there any other comments from my fellow councillors before we wrap up this part of the agenda? Councillor Kylie?
Yeah, I just, going back here, looking at when the annexation did take place, 1983, and I think back of all the people that have lived out there over the years, and citizens of Bernhard Morissette have been excellent people of the community, I don't think, at least I can't remember, the town having to take one property back for back taxes in that area. I could be wrong, but I think that tells you about the quality of people and the area itself as being a great area to live. I agree with what Brian Coghlan said and Mike Panagopka, that we have to move on, and my intent personally is to present a notice of motion at the next meeting with, I wanted to hear everybody out, and these were the last speakers, so I have my opinion, and I'm gonna present a motion, and I'm hopeful that council will agree with me, and, because I do have some concerns of the considerations that were brought to us, they're not the easiest to understand, there's a couple of them are a little bit confusing. I'd like to see something very straightforward, and also that's fair and equitable to both the town and the people of Bernhard Morissette, so that's my thoughts, thank you.
Okay, any other councillor, Mino?
It was mentioned a couple of times tonight about de-annexation, and that was not one of our CAOs, one of the recommendations you had. Should we pursue information on that topic, or are we gonna take that off the table? Because this came from some of the presenters, so I don't know if that's what their wishes are, or is that like a next step, I'm not clear on that one. The other thing I'm not clear on is, people are mentioning to amend the current agreement, is that, am I to understand that is like anywhere between 35 and 100%? That's a question to you, CEO.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I would have to seek a legal opinion of that.
Okay, because that's what I'm not clear of, like, from the floor, from the presenters in last week, to amend the OMB agreement suggests that we have the power or the authority to make that number or set that number, and I'm not too clear on that. So I'd like to get an opinion as to whether or not that is our option. And the other thing was, it was also mentioned as the rebuttal, we've received, I believe, five packages, including last week's, or last council meetings. I was gonna ask for our direction of staff to actually look up the contents of those presentations to verify the numbers or the statistics, the fact checking, if you wish, so that might take some time, so I don't know, Pat, I don't know if your notice of motion is going to, you know, it's gonna happen before we get this information, so I'm putting you on the spot, Peter. Can you get this information rebuttal before Pat's notice of motion?
Just so I understand, all the presentations and go through it kind of line by line?
Whatever it was written, because, I mean, verbally, it's a tough call, so if any, I know we receive packages, we receive copies, now those minutes or those presentations have facts in there? And I'd like to know if they are agreeable to the town as the way they're presented?
Yeah, will it be done by the next council meeting? No, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, so then, that's another concern I have, is before I get to entertain the motion that you're going to propose, Councillor Kylie, I don't know if all this information is correct or truthful or whatever, does town staff need to respond?
Councillor Kylie?
That being the case, what Norm is asking for, if you did go ahead with that, can you give us an approximate time? Again, we're talking about, I think both parties agree that we need to deal with this, we have a budget to do, we have to know where we stand fairly quickly. I don't wanna see this dragging on another couple months, I think it's painful for everybody.
Yeah, just through you, Mr. Chair, I can, I'd have to take it back and look at all the scenarios, look at all the files that exist, the town has, some of the data that was presented, I believe at the last meeting, was an analysis of downloading, provincial downloading costs, so that would require basically contacting the ministry, getting the actual data that was downloaded. So we have some internal records, but they, as with the rest of the town's records, they are, some are obsolete. So I do know that there has been three previous CAOs prior to me, there is internal correspondence that have requested a review of the taxation rates in Bernhard Morissette, 1990, 1995, sorry, three, two CAOs and a legal opinion in 1998. So, and they all reference downloaded costs, the provincial transfers, so they do have that as their, if I can find out the background of that, I'll happy to investigate.
Can we make a direction to staff to do our best to get as much of this information together for the next meeting, and then we'll make a decision whether to extend it or not? Because I'm just trying not to push this out two, three, four meetings, I mean, if we have the basic information for the next meeting, we'll decide then whether it's enough to move forward with a decision, and if it's not, then we'll have to push it off, but if we can get at least the high-level information back, I mean, for me, it's not gonna make a lot of difference, I'm, I have my own views on the subject matter, but can we make a promise to get that information as quickly as we can?
So just to clarify, the agenda packages are due internally on Friday, as long as the chair and council's wishes, we can present walk-up information, which gives the staff two weeks from today versus the agenda cutoff date?
Well, that would certainly work for me. Okay.
We'll try our best.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, are you looking for the legal opinion on amending the bylaw prior to that?
Councillor Mino?
Through you, Chair, those were your words, so I'm holding you to your word.
Sorry, in two weeks? Because I don't control our lawyer's schedule, so I could put in the request tonight, but I don't wanna speak for our attorney.
Well, I'm interested in whether or not this council has the authority to get between 35 at the present rate to the 100% or anything in between, that's, I need the legal opinion on that, otherwise I'm going to be making a decision that I have no legal grounds on, or it's debatable, or it's contestable, or actually it could be appealed. So I wanna have clarity for that. I'm also looking at the de-annexation part, now, I know it's an option, I know it's not something that we wanna get into a big debate on, but what's the workings around that? Like, what's our involvement, what's Bernard Morissette's involvement?
We have an answer.
How does that, well, if the chair allow? I need, that's what I'm saying, if that's an option, maybe we can explore it. If it's not an option from this table, then drop it, you know? And the other one was the rebuttal. I just need to find out if this information that's been sourced out is truthful or whatever, factual or...
If there's any information from the audience, please forward it to, if it's background, that'll be very helpful.
Yep, we will do that.
Thank you.
I have all the assessment on chart form from all my neighbors, now, I have personal information there, I don't know if they wanna release, but I've got assessments from 17, 18, 19, 20, what each increase is, that's how I worked out my calculations.
I think, Mike, what we're referring to is the mechanics behind council and what changes we can make.
Oh, okay, no, I thought you wanted the information to verify my figures, how I arrived at them.
Well, certainly that would be helpful, yes, and whatever you can pass along, that'll speed up the process.
Okay, fine.
I'd like to take a couple-minute break, I don't imagine everybody's gonna stick around for what appears to be a pretty dry meeting ahead of us, so if you'd like to stick around, you're more than welcome, but if you'd like to leave, we're not gonna be offended. You can join Rick over here. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
I have a motion that is moved by Councillor Kylie, and it's seconded by Councillor Mino, that council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The regular meeting of council held January 23, 2018, and the meeting to open proposals for facility condition and repurposing assessment of the old pool site that was held January 26, 2018.
All in favor? Reports of municipal officers and communications. The clerk, AMO resolution.
Okay, so this is a resolution that was, I was asked to put on the agenda by two of our councillors. It's moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Mino, and it's kind of a long one, so here it is. Whereas Bill one sixty, which is a strengthening quality and accountability for patients act, amended the ambulance act to permit the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care to enable two pilot projects hosted by willing municipal governments, sorry.
I think you can paraphrase, Joy.
All right. So this is a pilot project that the province had, had put together, and they were going to go ahead and have two municipalities do the pilot projects. And AMO is concerned that now with, in the interest of arbitration, that these are going to be imposed upon municipalities. And so because there is the absence of this protection, AMO is asking council to support them to, to call the province of Ontario to act immediately so that these amendments will protect unwilling municipalities from being forced by the arbitrators to have fire medic pilot or program. And it'll be placed before the budget, before the Ontario legislator, legislature rises for the provincial election. So...
Okay, so that's...
That's the resolution.
That's the resolution?
Yes.
Open the floor for any comments. Councillor Kylie?
Yeah, I think my concern was basically that we would have more cost downloaded to us, the municipality, and also if it's going to require either firemen to be paramedics and firefighters, or are they going to have individual fire, paramedics working twenty-four hour shifts? It just doesn't, it just doesn't make sense to me at all.
Councillor Mino?
Yeah, I would not support the, this legis, well, I mean, I would support the motion, I wouldn't support the legislation as it stands because it's not, there's no facts here. Like, a lot of the downloading has a funding formula attached to it. For example, the DSA will get fifty percent of anything that's budgeted for paramedic services, but they don't tell you what the formula here is. Is it hundred percent municipal or eighty percent, as in OW, for instance? OW is hundred percent now, so what's this, the trade-off? We don't know, we don't even know anything in terms of where they're going with the numbers. I think we should support this.
I know for me, oh, is there any other comments before I speak? I know for me, it's, it's the same concern I shared at the meeting where we spoke about the new, new fire master plan. The province has a complete patchwork of fire services in, for different levels of service for different municipalities. And, you know, this again is, is another concern where, you know, something is going to get, you know, stuck on somebody and not on others, and we're going to, you know, create this unlevel playing field that I'm totally against, so I certainly support it. So I'll call a vote then? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next item is, I have the town planner, not the CAO. Okay, request to purchase portion of laneway to the north of twenty-one George Street is the first item.
Okay, so this is a request to purchase a piece of property located to the north of twenty-one, it's good, okay, just give me a second here, I'll zoom into the area. Twenty-one George Street, you can see with our GAS system here that we actually have the north portion of that claim, or that laneway already purchased and owned by Seventeen. So this was a request that was submitted back in May of two thousand and fifteen. We've been dealing with the owner for the last couple of years trying to resolve this. The issue that came up was the survey that was completed ended up just creating one part in the back, and this individual has two lots. So as I've kind of described to council before with deeming by law applications, once you deem two lots not to be on a planned subdivision, they'll merge automatically, which would basically cause these two lots to merge, and he'd lose his ability to construct a house on one of them. And in order to merge this part three with this, these two lots, we wanted to see that all become one big lot versus, you know, you'd have this big long piece merging with just eight eighteen or just with eight seventeen, and you have, it just wouldn't be clear or concise like a planner would want. So, at this point, what we did and tried to resolve the issue, because he didn't want to proceed with another survey to split that piece in half, was to proceed with the sale on the north portion only, and we'd revisit the, the west portion later on. So this, the purchase price was agreed upon at council during an in-camera meeting in two thousand and fifteen, it was to be five times the annual lease rate. So at that point, it was one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, but with the removal of the, that western portion, it's eight hundred and thirty-one sixty-three, plus the cost of legal and survey, so. Are there questions?
Okay, so this comes back as a bylaw later then?
Yes.
All right, so the next item is the delegation of files from the Municipal Affairs and Housing to TKL.
Yes, so this one was actually something that started to take place in the summer. We received a phone call from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing who informed us that we still have a draft plan of subdivision that's, that's in their files, that dates back to nineteen ninety-three. This is a piece of property on Goodfish, it's described as mining claim L two zero nine zero. Basically, what they're trying to do is, as of February first last year, we did grant author, or they, the ministry empowered the municipality to grant approvals for planned subdivision applications, official plan amendments, that was the big one that you heard about at council. But yeah, we do have the ability to grant approval of planned subdivisions now. So what they want to do is give us a copy of the draft plan of approval, so that if anybody wants to take this draft plan and bring it forward and bring it to full approval, they can deal specifically with the municipality rather than the ministry. This makes sense from a planning perspective, we are the ones that are on-site and can, and can determine whether or not this would be something we'd want to recommend or pursue. At this point, we can leave it in the roll file as an open file, and if there's a landowner presently that wants to continue with the subdivision, or a future landowner that's looking to purchase the property, it is an incentive to have one already in that draft state. There are conditions that the ministry has already imposed, so as soon as they meet those conditions, we bring them to full planned subdivision and they can go ahead and subdivide the property. So the options for councillors is to request to be delegated this file, and we do have the ability to rescind this draft plan if we want to, but I will need to get some legal opinions on how to do that, if that's the way we want to go. Or we have the request to leave the file with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing and have them proceed to finalize it on our behalf if somebody so chooses. So it could stay at their end or it can stay at ours. My recommendation is to keep it with us, we'll have it in the roll file and be able to discuss it if somebody wants to move forward with it.
Any questions from council? Just one question, Ashley, you mentioned Goodfish, but this is actually in Tech Township, right?
Sorry, yes, it's on Goodfish Road, Airport Road.
Okay, don't want, didn't mean to be smart aleck. Okay, well, councillor Mino?
Ashley, you said there's no cost with the transfer of the files. Would there be any costs down the road if the subdivision plan starts getting acted on?
No, so the, there'd be staff time associated with processing the application, but other than that, I don't believe we could at that point initiate a user fee to generate revenue. I'm not sure where we would go with that route. Currently, our user fee, I think the planned subdivision hasn't been established as a user fee at this point, so we need to look at that, now that we have the authority.
Would there be any bill back to the ministry?
No, no.
Councillor Kylie?
Yeah, Ashley, wouldn't it be to our advantage to maintain control of that subdivision?
I would say for...
To the town?
Yeah, I would say for the ease and simplicity of dealing with someone right in front of us. It's always a lot nicer than to ship them away to the ministry and subray. They'd be dealing with it over the phone, trying to finalize it that way. We'd also be able to offer, like, the ministry would obviously ask us for some advice if there's anything else we want to, to see in that subdivision before it went to final approval, but it's a lot easier to deal with us than it is to deal with the ministry in terms of timeframes.
So that really is your recommendation?
Yes, it is. It is my recommendation to, to bring it down to our level.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we, is this coming back as a bylaw? All resolution, okay?
It's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Mino. The council of the town of Kirkland Lake requests the delegation of file fifty-four T eight-nine-zero-zero-three from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing.
All in favor? Next item is sale of Prince Street laneway to abutting landowners.
Okay, so this area here in Prince Street, we actually have a request to purchase that was submitted in the fall of two thousand and fifteen. It was the owner of three Prince who initiated this process, and he was intending to purchase a large portion of property that was actually double the size of his lot to the rear. Council during an in-camera meeting proceeded to agree to sign, to sell a maximum depth of fifty feet to correct encroachments that run that area. They also requested that staff notify the remaining property owners on Prince Street to determine whether or not they were interested in selling, or sorry, purchasing. So we did notify the fourteen landowners that were encroaching onto Prince, onto the back laneway of Prince Street, and we did get four responses. So we are dealing with the four owners, that's twenty-seven Earl, three, five and seven Prince, on the sale of the, of the fifty feet behind them as part of this request to purchase. At the time, we agreed to seventy-five cents per square foot. There has been deeming by law already passed in order to let all of those laneways and properties merge with the properties in front. The only thing I did want to mention was that there is an encroachment between three and five, so you can actually see that this little green house, our green garage in the back encroaches into where three, the portion that the three would be buying. So there is an agreement that is registered on title that that garage is to be removed, so that there will, we're not selling an encumbrance piece of property. So the garage is to be removed within the next two years, and that has been signed and stamped with lawyers before we proceed with the sale. Is there any questions with this one?
Okay, so it'll be coming back as a bylaw later then?
Perfect, thank you.
So introduction reading and consideration of bylaws now?
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Kylie. The bylaw eighteen dash zero zero nine, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of land north of twenty-one George Street, described as part two, fifty-four R five-eight-nine-seven, to Timothy Penfold and Lisa Chartran, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero one zero, being a bylaw to appoint members to committees of council by adding Glenn French Junior to the planning advisory committee and removing Ryan Dagelmann from the planning advisory committee, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Kylie. The bylaw eighteen dash zero one one, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of land along Goodfish Road, parts three, four and five of Plan fifty-four R five-nine-zero-three, to Tammy and Ronald Swanson, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero one two, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of laneway abutting south of seven Prince Street, described as parts one and two, fifty-four R six-zero-one-two, to Serge Dagel, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Kylie. The bylaw eighteen dash zero one three, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of laneway abutting south of three Prince Street, described as parts five, six, seven and eight, fifty-four R dash six-zero-one-seven, to Robbie Bro, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Kylie. The bylaw eighteen dash zero one four, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of laneway abutting south of twenty-seven Earl Street, described as parts nine and ten, fifty-four R dash six-zero-one-seven, to Feliciane and Cecile Boudreaux, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero one five, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of laneway abutting south of five Prince Street, described as parts three and four, fifty-four R dash six-zero-one-seven, to Stephane Boudreaux and Ashley McKnight, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Barker. The bylaw eighteen dash zero one seven, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with NOHFC for funding toward the identification, assessment and promotion of areas for commercial and industrial development, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? All right. Notices of motion? Seeing none at this meeting? Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by councillor Barker, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero one six, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held February sixth, two thousand and eighteen, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Councillors' reports? Seeing none? There's no additional information this evening, so we'll adjourn to an in-camera meeting?
So it's moved by councillor Barker, seconded by councillor Mino. The council adjourned its regular meeting of February sixth, two thousand and eighteen to an in-camera meeting to discuss an issue concerning the security of a municipal property.
All in favor? All right, that ends the meeting.